We have reached quorum, so I'd like to start the meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order today, Tuesday, June fourth. Sorry, seven oh two P M. I'm gonna be doing a roll call. This is a virtual meeting. Um Valerie Woodong.
I'm here.
Jared Stoffes.
I'm here.
Luke Chesek.
Here.
Daniel Carr.
Here.
Alright, so um we have a full quorum. Alright, so Vice Mayor, can you please lead us in the pledge allegiance? Luke.
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to item number two, review the agenda. Um Vice Mayor, can you go ahead and read the agenda as presented?
Sure. Uh this is the agenda for the legislative meeting of the mayor and council for Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. It's a virtual meeting. Number one, we have called to order in the pledge of allegiance. Number two, review of the agenda. Number three, mayor and council event announcements. Number four, presentation and of and discussion on West Hyattsville Queen Chapel Sector Plan and sectional map amendment. Number five, presentation of the youth scholarship awards. We will present the youth scholarship awards to the ten awardees. Number six, proclamation in support of reproductive rights. Mayor Selena Benitez will read a proclamation in support of reproductive rights. Number seven, public comment. Under old business, number eight, appointment of Mr. John Demon to the Arts Commission. Number nine, second reading and adoption of ordinance number zero four twenty twenty four, amending the code of ordinance of the city of Mount Rainier, chapter thirteen, traffic to add section thirteen, one twenty three point one, stop sign monitoring systems to implement the authority of Maryland code. Annotated transportation article, section twenty one, seven oh C, seven oh seven dot one, in accordance with the provision thereof, and to amend section thirteen, one twenty four, failure to pay fine for red lights, camera or speed camera violation to add stop sign monitoring system violations. Under new business, number ten, first reading of resolution number zero one twenty twenty four, a resolution affirming the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland's commitment to human rights and support for congressional and worldwide calls for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, release of hostages, and condemning anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian and anti- Islamophobic rhetoric and attacks. Number eleven, discussion and vote on council recess for July and August. Number twelve, presentation of minutes. The city clerk will present the May twenty first, twenty twenty four minutes to the mayor and council. Number thirteen, vote on approval of minutes for April sixteenth, twenty twenty four work session, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four budget legislative session, and May seventh, twenty twenty four legislative meeting, and then fourteen is adjournment.
Thank you so much. Uh Luke, is there anything you guys want to withdraw or add to the agenda? This is the time to speak up. If not, thumbs up so that way I could go through to the next step. We're good? Yes, well, hearing none, um I'm approving the agenda. We're putting the agenda as presented. Alright, moving on to item number three, mayor and council members, events and announcements. I love you guys. Keep it brief. We have a long agenda. Okay? Alright, we're gonna start with uh Jared.
Uh nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
Just that the um pride parade is on June fifteenth. It starts at ten thirty in the morning um at Thomas Stone and will end at the City Hall Annex Building. Um and this is an event putting, put on by the uh recreation committee. So thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Luke.
Um yes, thanks. Uh just a reminder that the SERC Community Emergency Response Team will have their monthly meeting on Monday, June twenty fourth at seven thirty P M. At the police station community room. Thank you.
Luke.
Okay, I think I have to, oh, I'm off mute. Um the Arts Commission, its next meeting will be June twelfth at eight P M. Um that will be get it posted on the public calendar uh with a Zoom link uh as well for those who want to attend. Again, that's June twelfth at eight P M. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Valerie announced the next community event. For some of you guys that have been asking, Mount Rainier Day, you know, got postponed because um there was severe bad weather and everything and everybody in the city just like, you know, and around the county postponed it. So we're looking at September seventh for Mount Rainier Day, so mark your calendars. That's what it's gonna be. Um if there's any changes, we will let you know, but at this point, that's the designated day, and I look forward to um congratulating our wonderful, wonderful, wonderful um scholarship recipients um in the meeting today. So it should be a very um wholesome meeting. We have a quite a few awardees for a scholarship committee, so. And saying that, um we'll move on to the next item. Thank you for keeping it brief, everyone. Alright, so presentation discussion on West High School Queen Chapel Sector Plan and Sector Plan Amendment. Mayor and constable have a discussion on the West High School Queens Chapel Sector Plan and Selectional Plan Amendment. And we do have some representatives um here. I think I see Scott. Hi Scott, uh Scott Rowe, is anybody else with you? Or is it just you tonight?
I'm joined tonight by Sarah Benton, Supervisor of the Long Range Planning Section. Um I'll be doing the presentation.
Alright, welcome Sarah as well. I wanted to at least acknowledge that it was at least more members of your team here. So Scott, um the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you need um sharing capability?
Can you see the presentation?
No. Not yet. I think it's coming up right now. There you go.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Benitez and members of the city council. My name is Scott Rowe with the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, Prince George's County Planning Department, Community Planning Division. Like I said, I'm joined tonight by Sarah Benton, Supervisor of the Long Range Planning Section. We're here this evening to provide a briefing on the twenty twenty four staff draft West Hyattsville Queen Chapel Sector Plan and its proposed sectional map amendment. Very good. As you know, sector plan establishes Prince George's County's vision, goals and policies for the future development and redevelopment of a defined area of the county. The plan contains strategies in eight functional areas of planning, which I'll get to in a second. Um the plan also makes recommendations for how land should be used or not used within the plan area. And the plan's concurrent sectional map amendment describes how the county zoning map would be amended to implement the recommendations of this plan. Uh I'm gonna provide you tonight a brief background and overview of the plan area, discuss how we engaged with the community and stakeholders over the last three years, um talk about the major issues and key recommendations within the staff draft sector plan and proposed SMA. Um speak about recommendations for implementation and go over next steps in the legislative approval process. As you may recall, this sector plan was initiated by the Prince George's County Council in October twenty twenty uh and was reinitiated in January twenty twenty two with a concurrent sectional map amendment. The initial staff draft sector plan and proposed SMA were released to the public in July of twenty twenty two, and we presented these to the city council on September twentieth, twenty twenty two. Uh on October eleventh, twenty twenty two, uh the county council and the Prince George's County Planning Board held a joint public hearing on the first staff draft plan and proposed SMA. Uh just after this hearing, uh the joint public hearing, the county council enacted two zoning bills that permitted development incompatible with the staff draft sector plan. Um due to the aforementioned legislation in December twenty twenty two, the planning board remanded the plan and SMA back to staff. Around the same timeframe, the planning department received input from the Prince George's County Department of the Environment uh that uh identified some inconsistencies between some of the initial staff draft plans proposals and the county's recently adopted climate action plan. So to provide a little bit of context about where the plan is, uh it's in the northwestern part of the county, obviously completely in County Council District Two um along the green line. Um the sector plan includes portions of the city of Hyattsville, the city of Mount Rainier, and the town of Brentwood. Uh the plan area butts the Prince George's Plaza Hyattsville Crossing Regional Transit District on the north and the District of Columbia on the south. Uh it's includes and surrounds the boundary of the two thousand six West Hyattsville Transit District Development Plan. Over the past three and a half years, the project team has convened and met with seven focus groups, conducted more than forty stakeholder interviews, held several virtual hybrid and in-person engagement events in both Spanish and English, and maintained several online resources for people to learn more about and participate in the planning process. As with all comprehensive plans, this plan contains goals, policies and strategies covering each of these eight elements of a comprehensive plan. Uh the ones that you see here. The major issues that this plan addresses are primarily those identified prior to the release of the first staff draft sector plan in July twenty twenty two. They include minimal development activity since the nineteen sixties, concerns about pedestrian access and safety, flood risks, lack of housing or immediately around metro stations, and a lack of sense of place and community gathering spaces. I'm gonna hold on this slide for a second so you can read the bullets. Key recommendations for the plans are going to be on the next couple of slides. Uh they include uh redeveloping the stations, excuse me, redeveloping the areas around the Hyattsville Crossing and West Hyattsville Metro Stations with vertical mixed-use development, transforming the road net system into a walkable network of complete streets that serve all users safely. Um acquiring and preserving rather than developing properties within the floodplain and concentrating retail around the metro stations. Um constructing a variety of new housing types at a range of price points, especially in the Queen's Chapel Manor neighborhood that's between the West Hyattsville and Hyattsville Crossing Metro Stations, where the proposed SMA recommends rezoning the neighborhood to the residential single-family attached zone to allow for the construction of additional one, two and three family homes, uh developing a cohesive branding, wayfinding and public art strategy, and adding new parks, plazas and public open spaces for the community to enjoy. In, as I mentioned before, um in October twenty twenty two, the planning board and the county council hosted a joint public hearing on the July twenty twenty two staff draft plan. At that hearing, we received a considerable amount of testimony from a variety of residents and other stakeholders. Uh these are some of the um some of the key issues that were raised in that testimony are incorporated in this most recent staff draft. Um most of the ideas raised in testimony actually are incorporated in the staff draft plan before you. Uh appendix E of the staff draft sector plan contains staff's analysis of the October twenty twenty two joint public hearing testimony and the changes that staff made to the staff draft sector plan as a result of that testimony. Um this slide identifies the major changes in this staff draft sector plan from the previous twenty twenty two version. Um the plan no longer recommends developing in the floodplain, except where it's already been approved. Um we eliminated the Conference of Floodplane Mitigation Program that was recommended uh because of a variety of reasons that are listed here. Um recommend eliminating traffic level of service standards within the local transit center. Um recommends uh acquiring Queenstown apartments and properties along Jamestown Road near the metro station for floodplain preservation unless um DPI determines that they are eligible to be developed, uh in which case they should be developed and redeveloped at the uh densities and that with the quality recommended in the LTO core zone. And then the plan recommends preservation of Rainier Manor to ensure that our seniors have a place to live that is close by to the metro and other amenities. This map shows the recommended boundary of the West Hyattsville Local Transit Center. Uh this represents an expansion from the boundary as it was shown in Plan twenty thirty five. Um Plan twenty thirty five designated centers uh generally have a core and an edge. The core is generally the area closest to a metro or other transit station where people can walk to the station. The edge is generally a transitional area where housing and other development densities are reduced to transition between the intensity of development in the core of the center and surrounding neighborhoods. This plan also recommends expanding the edge of the Prince George's Plaza Regional Transit District to encompass properties across Belcrest Road from the Hyattsville Crossing Metro Station. This shows how the center boundary uh is located within the city. This map shows the recommended master plan of transportation street network for the plan area. Uh note that all of the streets within the plan area uh that are recommended for upgrades are recommended as urban center streets where use of the county's updated urban street design standards will be required as streets are constructed or reconstructed. This map shows the recommended bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Solid lines show facilities that exist and dash lines show facilities that have yet to be constructed. The hope is that this system will greatly increase access to the metro system and regional trail network for plan area residents. This slide depicts the plan's recommended park, recreation and open space facilities. A highlight of these recommendations is the implementation of a greenway trail and linear park system called the West Hyattsville Greenway that connects the northern and southern sides of the plan area across Northwest Branch. This shows the future land use map for the West Hyattsville Queen Chapel Sector. It reinforces the plan's recommendations for vertical mixed-use around the metro stations and neighborhood-scale mixed uses along Maryland two oh eight Hamilton Street and Hyattsville and Varnum Street here in Mount Rainier. It also shows recommended commercial uses for areas in the floodplain, underscoring the plan's recommendation that these areas remain in commercial use until such a point that they can be acquired for floodplain mitigation and preservation. This map shows the existing zoning as approved in the two thousand twenty one countywide map amendment. And this slide shows the recommended changes to zoning in the proposed sectional map amendment within the city of Mount Rainier. The primary zoning change of note here is the proposed reclassification of Queenstown Apartments from the residential multifamily twenty zone uh to the local transit-oriented core LTOC zone. This will ensure that if Queenstown is able to or wants to redevelop one day, they have to do it in a manner, scale and mix of uses approximate, excuse me, appropriate for their proximity to the metro station. Like all our plans, this plan contains a detailed implementation table that illustrates lead and partner agencies for each implementation action along with a recommended timeframe. Like all plans, this plan will require the coordinated and dedicated action of stakeholders and agencies to maintain momentum toward plan implementation. Uh this slide and the next slide are a reminder of the long and circuitous path we've been on to get to this point. Uh as I mentioned earlier, the plan was originally initiated in September of twenty twenty. Um we have a joint public hearing of the county council and the planning board scheduled on July eighth where people can sign up to speak their mind on the staff draft plan and proposed sectional map amendment. We encourage everyone to in submit their ideas in writing to the clerk of the Prince George's County Council prior to the close of the public record on July twenty third, two thousand twenty four. Uh the, you can put a lot more of your thoughts into writing than you can speak in three minutes. And you could provide us, the planning board and the council, more details of your thoughts on the plan and SMA. Following the joint public hearing, we, the planning department staff, review and an, excuse me, review and analyze the testimony and make recommendations to the planning board whether to adopt the sector plan and endorse the sectional map amendment and whether or not they should adopt or endorse amendments based on the testimony they received at the joint public hearing. The planning board would then vote to adopt the plan and endorse the SMA, usually with amendments based on the testimony, and transmit it to the Prince George's County Council for their review and approval. Prince George's County Council reviews the testimony and analysis and the planning board's adoption and endorsement. The council may further amend the plan based on the testimony they heard at the public hearing or approve it as adopted by the planning board. If the council wants to amend the plan to change something that was not raised in testimony at the first joint public hearing, they have to hold a second joint public hearing only on those amendments that are not based on the joint public hearing testimony. In addition to the public hearing, we have two open houses coming up. One in Hyattsville next Tuesday on June eleventh at Saint Michael's Episcopal Church on Thirty Sixth Drive and one July twenty fifth at the Mount Rainier Nature Center. We will have planning department staff at each of these meetings who can answer any questions the public may have about the staff draft plan and proposed SMA. It's very important that everyone understand that while we are available to answer questions at any time, the primary way that the planning board can amend the staff draft plan is based on the testimony received by the clerk of the county council before the close of business on July twenty third. As I mentioned, uh we received amazing testimony from residents and stakeholders in the October joint pub, October twenty twenty two joint public hearing, and we were able to incorporate many, many changes to the sector plan that came directly from the community. Uh this concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and your participation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, um Scott and also um Sarah. Uh Jared, I'm gonna pass it to you first. Go ahead.
Yep, uh thank you so much, Scott and Sarah, for your time and all, and M N C P P C's hard work on this, so it's really much appreciated. Uh one quick clarification and then two quick questions. Um so in the sector plan, some of the major changes that you laid out, you recommended acquisition of Queenstown Apartments and properties along Jamestown Road for flood floodplain preservation unless DPI issues waivers and in which case they should be developed. Uh when you're sug, when you're suggesting uh recommending acquisition for floodplain preservation, what does that mean? Does that mean you would acquire the property and seize its current use?
So uh for areas that are in the floodplain, what the plan recommends is that ultimately, a- and this is, you know, each property needs to make a, they they have the opportunity to delineate the floodplain on their property, provide that information to DPI, and DPI can say, okay, you're not in the floodplain. However, for the properties that are currently shown in the floodplain, um if they are truly in the floodplain, uh the plan recommends acquiring those properties over time um and basically restoring them to natural use or to uh additional um environmental or parkland. Uh this would happen, you know, o- over time. Um it may be the Department of Parks and Recreation that would acquire those properties. It could be another entity. Um but that's something that uh we think with the amount of land that we have uh to redevelop in this area and around the county, um development in the floodplain is not really necessary to meet our growth goals.
Got it. Okay, so. Oh, sorry, the, okay. Yes, Selena, sorry.
Do you have anything? If you, if you're done, we'll pass the next person.
Yeah, a quick, a quick question, a quick comment. I just wanted to say. Yeah, a quick question, a quick comment. I just wanted to say, obviously, understand the floodplain piece, but, you know, that's and you recommended preservation Rainier Manor for senior housing in Queenstown is where the majority of our working class residents live. It's actually the majority of housing in the city, and it's one of the few very transit accessible pockets, rail transit accessible pockets in the county. That's relatively, I mean, a lot of studios there, still a thousand, I mean, relatively cheap, so just, just a comment, and I think we can provide feedback on this as to, you know, future, future trajectory for that. The other question I had for you was on the record, the local transit center boundary that was on the next slide after the major changes from the draft sector plan.
So Jared, that'll be your final question, okay? And that's it. Next time, both questions together, okay?
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
From, in the local transit center boundary, you had a very small proportion of the Queen Chapel Shopping Center, but not the rest of it. There's a lot of unused, there's a lot of unused land, a lot of unutilized land in those shopping centers where the U-Haul is, where the and so forth. I don't know if you know what, see what I mean, but I'm curious why you wouldn't consider that in the core and places to build up new housing relative to some of the other, other definition of the current core.
Those properties are in the floodplain.
Got it. Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Jared. Valerie?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all your work on this. I think it's a lot of work, so it's good. I guess my only real question is that we had just done a Vision Zero Plan. And I know that you, I think you've incorporated most of that. I think we talked about that last time you were here. But I saw on Rundle Road, it's a shared use path on some of it, and then it goes into a bike, bike lane. Can you just talk a little bit about the bike infrastructure that would be proposed and going back and forth up and down Upsher and in that area? Are those all shared use paths? Are they bike lanes? How does that work exactly?
Before Scott, before you answer, can I ask for more time on the clock? Because we have less than two minutes. It gives you time to answer, and then we still have at least three more of us that need to talk, so can I get? Oh my God, ten more minutes on the clock?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Objection, extension here. None. We have added ten more minutes to the clock. Go ahead, Scott.
Yes, that would be proposed for bicycle lanes. One thing that's not clear, as clear on the map because of just the symbology that we have with our mapping, is that many of the on-road bike lanes will be recommended to be protected bike lanes. And that as part of our broader countywide master plan of transportation, that's what we're recommending in a lot of places. And where opportunities exist, some, in some places where you may have on-street parking, it could be a parking separated bike lane. The key thing, point I want to make here is that I know that the city received some funding for transportation improvements. And because of the timing of that, whatever comes out of that process would be incorporated into the plan through the legislative approval process so that it's not, it's not saying do something that's the, is different from what is under construction at that time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Luke?
Yeah, I would just add that bike lanes on places like Upsher are, would be really hard to do. You'd have to get rid of street parking or you'd have to change the street one way. We did a lot of research into that across the the city. That was one of my original thoughts is to change a few streets one way and be able to add bike lanes in one direction and then vice versa for the for the other street. And I think, you know, residents were not happy with that proposal, and I think it would just be really hard to do without taking away street parking because our streets are so, so narrow. But but we're, but you'll see how we end up implementing things in order to make it more bike-friendly and slowing down traffics across the city. My one question is just a clarification on the line of questioning that Jared did. For the acquisition of potential properties, that would only be if the owner offered it for sale, right? That wouldn't be, the county's not trying to like use eminent domain to acquire these properties. That would only be if the opportunity presented itself to the county, right?
Yeah, I don't envision that in this day and age, anyone's going to use eminent domain for that. It's really just buying properties out as, you know, businesses go out of business or something like that.
And my guess is those properties are owned by real estate investment trusts, and they would probably be looking for a more lucrative deal than what the county could provide, is my guess. Okay, just for residents to be aware that there is that acquisition is probably not anywhere eminent. Thank you.
I was, can I just add something, Luke? Yeah, I think the county is more in, they want to have the first right of being offered the properties around the county. I think that's what it is. So that's partly the things that they're working on in order to make sure they get a first bid, whether or not they go forward. That's a different question. But my understanding is like they want to make sure that the various like portions need to come to them first. Okay, so yeah, a hundred percent eminent domain. All right, Danielle?
Okay, yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I was actually honored to be a graduate of your first MNC PPC Neighborhood Planning Community Planning Committee class back in November. I enjoyed that very much, learned a lot. I still love my project and would love to see something like that happen down there behind the nature center. A walking path and outdoor exercise area for the seniors and the residents of both Queen Manor Garden and Queenstown. I do, I echo what Luca and Jared said about the acquisition of Queenstown. That is, there are a thousand units in there, and that's my ward. That's mine and Luke's ward, and they're affordable units. And in today's time, you know, that, that's a concern. So when I heard acquisition of Queenstown, that immediately threw up red flags for me. So if you could walk me through this as if I have no idea, because there are people out there who hear those words, it's very scary. Please walk it through exactly what can and cannot happen, or what would or would not happen. Because that's scary for people to think that they may end up losing those apartments.
So, a- as you know, Queenstown is, is physically very old. Whether or not it is in the floodplain or out of the floodplain is a matter of some debate that we're hoping they will figure out by doing a floodplain delineation on their property. If they, whether or not they're in the floodplain or not, it's likely that over the twenty-five-year life of this plan, they would redevelop. Or, or try to redevelop. The question would be how much they could based on where floodplain is on their property. Or whether, because it's not just, it's not just water getting in from the Northwest Branch. They're at the bottom of the river valley, and the stormwater goes downhill to them. So, there is, figuring that out is the first step. Once they have a sense of their future, what the plan recommends is that property owner, the county, the city, nonprofits, everyone pull together and assist residents if there's going to be, if leases aren't going to be renewed. Help them find housing that is of comparable price somewhere, hopefully near a metro station where they have the access to jobs and housing and opportunities that you wouldn't otherwise have if you moved somewhere in the county that doesn't have that transit access. So that, you know, the plan, that's the first step. If they go through a process and Deepi determines they're not in the floodplain, they can redevelop. And that's what they want to do. We want to see them redevelop, not only in a way that meets the the density and the, the quality that the LTO core zone requires that other zones don't. But also that they look at doing a planned development zone where they may be able to get additional density in exchange for things like below-market rate units, which would be a huge win for that. But the plan really looks at the reality that a lot of our aging apartment complexes are, are becoming near their end of their useful life. And what's the next step? We don't want to see this thing just get, one day, oh, we're redeveloping, they come in, displace everyone, and then rebuild all market rate. We want to really work with property owners throughout the plan area to make sure that that's done sensitively. And that we're, that we're taking care of our residents and not just saying, oh, well, you're, you're on your own now. Because like, like has been brought up, this is, this is a very large apartment complex in a very unfortunate location topographically and environmentally, but a great location in proximity to the metro station. So, this is something that, you know, we'll, we'll continue to work with them and try to identify the best path forward that allows people to still have an opportunity to live this close to a metro station and a lot of other amenities that are there.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that.
Hey, thank you so much. I think for me, the danger that could lead on is that, you know, they decide to, and, you know, once the life of the apartments are done, turn into marketplace, right? Because now marketplace will be close to a metro, and most of the apartments are close to metros are up there in price, right? So they become unaffordable. But I think that this also makes them aware of what can they do, and they need to work on pre-planning if they want to get the various things that they need. So I think that overall, like the pre-planning will allow us to figure out what it looks like, whether they're in the zone or not, but also make sure that they are aware that we are also watching what they're doing and that they're doing what's best for the, for the residents. Because they might be low income, but if water is flowing into the apartments every time there's a big rain, right? It's also not a way of living. I mean, that's something that we need to also be cautious. So there's going to have to be a balance between both ways. All right, so Scott and Sarah, thank you guys so much for coming. Please expect a letter from the city of Mount Rainier where our feedback, as you guys know, we're highly involved in all the process, and I do appreciate, and I think the whole team does, that the letters that we have submitted or the boxes we have done is also incorporated in the plan. So we definitely do appreciate that their voices are being heard. And a good percentage of the requests that we made were, were added and taken into consideration. So we look forward to continue building a partnership and keep us informed in order to make sure we know what the next steps are and when the new plan, I know you put the little scare on it, so if you have any flyers, information about like the meeting that's going to be at the nature center, can you please send it out to us? The other one is San Mateos, San Matthews Church. It's a very predominant Latino church and immigrant church. So I'm glad that you guys are also reaching to community members of like various sectors. And so if you could put, if you have a flyer between, with both of them, we'll definitely like put it in our social media and spread the word around as well. Okay?
That would be great. Thank you so much. And again, let us know if you have any further questions. I'm sure as people look through the plan and you're preparing the city's report, you know, if you have any questions, just, just reach out to us and let us know.
Thank you so much. Okay, so how about, I mean, you guys are welcome to stay, but if not, have a great night, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, perfect. Jared, yes, I'm looking at you, Jared, our expert transporter and all stuff. That letter looks like it has our name attached to it. All right, moving on to the next item. Presentation of the Youth Scholarship Awards. Mayor Council present the Youth Scholarships Award to the ten awardees. So I want to start by thanking our wonderful scholarship committee who meets and makes sure that they interview every single person that has an approved package. Also to our wonderful staff who leads this effort, Melissa Sam, our city clerk, Director of Administrative Service, and a thousand titles that we put for Melissa, right? She leads the team to make sure she arranged the interviews and that all the packages are completed. Kids are missing something. All the young adults, Melissa reaches out to them and says, hey, something's missing, turn it in. And the city works very hard to make sure that we're able to carry them through. So a big thank you to our whole committee. So except for the committee, the staff, and myself, we have kept secret on who the awardees are. And they've been told not to say anything because want to make sure it's a fair one. So Melly, can you put the names up? So we would like to, so seven of them will get four thousand dollars, and the last three will get two thousand dollars. So Amir Raging, Anthony Romero Gonzalez, Justice Bill Perry, Montana Norman, Maximo Valle, Kimberly Agustin, Socorro Villanueva, Deandra Page, Maricela Gutierrez Lasso, and Kaylee Nova. So the first seven will get four thousand, the last three will get two thousand. I definitely want to thank the scholarship committee. I know it's really hard. We all read through the application packages, you know, well, they do. They're the one that makes the questions, decides and everything, and usually I drive the question, and I already told them that this upcoming year, they are going to be the ones putting the secret question together. So that will mean that that last little one percent that I'm involved on, I'm going to remove myself to make sure, as you guys know, I love building infrastructure and having committees that could run on their own and support them in any way I can. But it's definitely important for staff and the committees to take lead on, on everything. The question, I usually do it because they want me to keep it secret. All right, so I think some of the kids are here, not all them, some of them because of school commitments. They are not here. But we are going to have pictures in our ceremonies, some of them because of previous commitments, some of them are like, you know, performing for band and X, Y, and Z. But they'll be receiving the check, and you guys will see them all over the place. As a reminder, this scholarship is open for Mount Rainier residents. They could be high school students who graduated and attended, are going to be attending college, university, or trade school, or they're already in college, university, and trade school. But every year we have a wonderful responding outstanding kids. All right, so in doing that, Melly, is there anything else that I'm missing? Melissa Sam?
No, Mayor.
All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much. And the scholarship funds are awarded through our ARPA funds. Mayor Council, thank you for approving those funds. And because they have to be allocated, the next round of scholarships is going to be put out in September. This last round from the ARPA funds is going to be geared towards people that are already in college, university, or trade school. Because they have to have, we're going to be able to give them money by December. So if you were not able to make it to this round, in September being the lookout for another round of scholarships, and this is actually our sixth year giving scholarships. So this year was forty-two thousand dollars that we are giving out, Melly. Do you remember? Melly's doing the math right now.
Yes, Mayor.
Forty-two thousand dollars towards education that's been given out this season. And we're trying to tally how much we're giving out in the six years. I'll have that report for you guys on it, but you'll see these kids, the volunteer in our community, the volunteer with the various programs. And it's always exciting for them to, to be aware of this money. All right? So anyways, thank you guys so much, and thank you to the scholarship committee. And Melly, thank you so much for all the work they do to make this happen and for you to be like the administrative wing pushing everything that's needed for this item. Mr. Kamali, thank you as well for making sure everything happens behind doors as well. All right, thank you guys so much. All right, moving on to the next item, and we'll go ahead and post the names and everything after, okay? We'll have like mug shots of the children as well, and young adults, I'm sorry, young adults. All right, perfect. Go on to the next one. All right, proclamation and support reproductive rights. So this is my item, Mayor, to make this for your proclamation, support reproductive rights. So can you pull it up, Melly? Thank you so much. So I'm going to give our Vice Mayor a small break. Luke? Okay, and I'll read this one, okay? It's not that long. All right. So this is the city of Mount Rainier proclaiming June twenty fourth reproductive rights as Human Rights Day in the city of Mount Rainier. Whereas on June twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, the United States Supreme Court in Dobbs versus Jason's Women's Health Organization overturned a fifty-year precedent that Barrow v. Wade, Planned Parenthood v. Casey, eliminate the federal constitutional right to abortion in the United States, and subsequently, more than a dozen states have passed legal barriers that fully ban abortion, and many others have passed legal barriers that severely restrict abortion and whereas there has been an increased risk of criminalization of people seeking abortion, doctors, nurses, and those involved in providing and distancing reproductive and gender-affirming care. And whereas since the overture of Roe v. Wade via Dobbs decision, subsequently, the ban has forced thousands of affected to travel outside state borders to seek care in states such as Maryland where abortion is legal. And I just noticed there's a little tea I need to get rid of. All right. Alright, let me see. Whereas the access to safe and legal abortions is a human right that should be safeguarded legally protected. No one should be criminalized for for any pregnancy outcome or for proving essential care or providing essential care. And whereas pregnant people uh who have been denied abortion care may be putting their health, fertility and lives at risk have been forced to carry non-viable pregnancies to term or have been criminalized for miscarriage, the circumstances of their pregnancy, abortions and other pregnancy outcomes. And whereas the retrogression of abortion rights in the United States conflicts with the United States obligation under international human rights law and can move it up, Meli? Thank you. Whereas we've seen in various countries, the effects of criminalization, healthcare, women forced to carry available pregnancies to term at the cost of their health and sentenced lives and women serving decades long sentence for suffering miscarriage such as the International Questo Beatriz and others. Um Vio Salvador and the countless women currently serving thirty years or more in jail in El Salvador. And whereas treaties ratifying the United States are binding on individual states in our supreme law of the land under class two of Article Six of the Constitution. And whereas indigenous people, black and brown people, people of color, people with low incomes, people living rural areas, people with disabilities, immigrants, LGBTQ plus individuals and other marginalized individuals are disproportionately likely to be surveilled, arrested, charged, prosecuted, convicted and heavily punished within the American criminal justice system and due to the systematic discrimination to experience additional scrutiny from the American legal system. And oof, well done. There. Whereas the United States have been reviewed by the International Convention of Civil and Political Rights, the ICCPR, the International Convention on the Eliminating of Full Forms or Racial Discrimination, the ICERD. To treaties margin bodies, since the V uh Jason's Women's Organization decision, the United States Human Rights Committee has explicitly recommended the United States government at all levels, federal, state and local uphold our human rights obligations obligations under this treaties, including protect those sexual reproductive health and rights. And whereas abortion is legal in the state of Maryland, it has been since nineteen seventy-three and was reaffirmed again by voters in a referendum in nineteen eighty-two. However, a statute can be repealed legislatively without involving the voters. And Dove has shows that even if abortion is currently legal, it can remain at risk. And whereas a constitution amendment offers the highest form of protection from abortion care in Maryland, repealing an amendment to the constitution is more and more difficult than reversing other types of policy protections for reproductive freedoms. And whereas Maryland Governor Wes Moore signed into law the reproductive freedom bill package in twenty twenty-three that included an electronic health record data privacy bill, a shielding bill to protect providers and patients of legal reproductive healthcare, including abortion for attacks by anti-abortion extremists in other states. I'll be requiring four-year residents at public college to put in place a plan for students to access comprehensive sexual reproductive healthcare, including abortion, ST, STI testing and treatment, contraceptives and emergency contraceptives and a constitution amendment to ensure every person in Maryland has the right to prevent, continue or end their own pregnancy. Whereas the reproductive freedom bill has allowed for constitutional amendments to be on the ballot in Maryland in November twenty twenty-four, this November twenty twenty-four. The decision to prevent pregnancy through contraception, carry a pregnancy term or term of pregnancy through abortion will only be up to a pregnant person and their healthcare provider. In the absence of federal legislation, it is the strongest possible protection of the right to reproduce freedom for Maryland residents. And whereas this proclamation aligns the Mount Rainier City Government with its human rights obligations under International Convention of Civil and Political Rights in accordance with Article Six, Class Two of the Constitution. Now therefore via resolve, I Selena Benitez, Mayor of the City of Mount Rainier, do heart proclaim June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four as reproductive rights as human rights day in the city of Mount Rainier and encourage all citizens to join together. Alright, so there is the proclamation. And I know it's a lengthy one, but um it could have been so much lengthy, Eric, because there's so much to add into it. Alright. So um the city staff will put it in our website and they're gonna go ahead and share it through our outlets and um June um twenty-four is, you know, International Human Rights Day. Uh Meli, can you put the top? Thank you. So supporting uh reproductive rights and you will most likely see some people wearing um green um as the color. Some of them handkerchief is basically a humanitarian side that's used worldwide um in order to um stand for um human rights um. And the right to choose and make people for their own decisions when it comes to a conversation between the person and their doctors. Alright. That is it on that one. Okay? We're moving on to the next item. Alright, the next item is public comment. Okay, can you put it back to like the rules for public comment? So I'm gonna ask you guys to potentially do something, okay? We usually ask people if they have a comment for an item of the agenda, if they could potentially wait for the item of the agenda to speak. If they cannot stay up that late, you could make your public comment, uh your statement during public comment, okay? Uh you'll take one by the apple, which is like either public comment or on the item. Because I do see a lot, I've been watching plenty of you guys um who like to speak on item number seven. Alright, so I'll read the spiel so that we're on the same page. Mayor City Council Advice and welcomes comments at public meetings. The mayor or presiding officer will recognize you. Please introduce yourself first and last name for recurring purposes and give the name of your street and block number, i.e. forty-three hundred block of thirty-fourth street. Please indicate in the chat whether you would like the mayor to read your comment or you will speak on your comment. Public comment has a limit of three minutes per speaker, otherwise agree upon by the mayor. You guys have three minutes. While speaking, please maintain a courageous tone and avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about a performance of conduct of any city employee, please bring your concerns to the attention of our city manager who will look into the matter and respond to you. As said, courtesy to other residents' business, the council requests that speakers not use specific address or names of individuals when describing a situation or making complaints, noting the block is preferred over any specific address. So I would like to, by reading this, I'm asking you guys to please um stay within your time allocated. One and two, um non-nam calling, um be proper, no cursings, right? And at the same time, if we, if somebody has a difference of opinion, we will still hear them out. So I ask for you guys to mute your mics unless you are speaking. Um failure to um violate the rules. So the quorum um is gonna be requested for you to leave from the meeting. So that this is my verbal warning to everybody. Okay, because I wanna make sure that we hear everybody, but at the end of the day, we need to respect. We are neighbors to each other, okay? Alright, so I have a long list of people that wanna speak, so I'm gonna call your name and I need you to tell me whether you wanna speak on the item or you wish to speak now. Alright, I'm gonna start with oof, let me see who I see first. So I see uh Jess Epstein, Jess Epstein, thirty-fifth street and Shepherd speak now or on item number seven?
I'll speak now.
Okay, go ahead, Jess. The floor is yours.
Great. Uh I am speaking regarding the proposed ceasefire resolution. Uh and, and I, you know, hope some of my, my friends and compatriots will, will speak uh at the, at the time of, of the discussion, but uh I, I'd like to start by saying that I'm Jewish. Uh I was born Jewish, I'll die Jewish. Um I've always identified very strongly as a, as a Jew. Uh and one of the things that I, I learned um from childhood, like with mother's milk, uh is that genocide is bad, right? Very, a very simple idea that um that Jews grew up with. And and so for me, watching what's happened since October uh seventh has been one of the most heartbreaking experiences of my life because I see many of my fellow Jews uh advocating on the side of, of the genocidal actor that is Israel uh in a way that is increasingly distressing as we see more and more Palestinians die, as we see more and more Palestinians slowly serve to death, as we see more and more of, of Palestinian uh land turned to rubble, as we see more and more institutions with, within the Gaza Strip simply disappear. Uh and as the situation becomes more and, and more dire and more and more heinous, uh uh I become more and more horrified. And, and I've advocated strenuously for a, a full and permanent ceasefire uh and an end to arms transfers to Israel with our representative Glenn Ivey uh to no avail. Uh and I, I feel that he has failed us as a representative. And one of the reasons that uh we turn to you as a local body typically not engaged in international issues is that when, when our higher level representatives fail us, uh we turn to our more local accessible institutions to take a stand, to say something and to be visible. Uh Mount Rainier would be in good company, joining Brentwood and Culver Manor uh and potentially soon to be Riverdale Park and I'm forgetting, and Chevrolet and, and a couple of other examples, other folks will cite. Um so I, I'd just like to say um I fully support this resolution. Uh it breaks my heart that we have to bring it to you. Uh it breaks my heart on multiple levels that we have to bring it to you. I'm so proud and grateful um for all of the folks who've helped bring it this far and for all of the support. I know that it already has among a number of council members. Uh and I appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you so much. I will ask you guys to use um our representative or center if you guys choose to, but don't put no names, okay? If I was for that, respect to be carried through. Alright? Alright, so let me see. So same rules. I'm gonna call you. Let me know if you speak now or in the item, okay? Alright, so let me see. Linda, uh thirty-one hundred block of Varnum Street. Uh speak now or in item number seven?
Thank you. I'll speak now.
Go ahead.
Um Linda Green, thirty-one hundred block of Varnum Street. Um I'm a retired physician who has trained uh over a hundred international graduates in internal medicine in the county uh when I was working at the hospital. And uh several of them are from Palestine, but many others are Muslim. And uh I have been seeing these folks at some of the local protests, and so I'm speaking in support of the resolution for ceasefire and et cetera. Um I also am a member of the American Public Health Association, which has twenty-five to thirty thousand members, as well as many more people in local affiliates, including the Maryland Public Health Association. And in November, the American Public Health Association uh passed a statement uh after a three-hour debate. So this is not a straightforward kind of discussion, obviously. Um and I'm going to read it because it was very short after a lot of debate. "In light of the continuing escalating of civilian casualties in Gaza and Israel and the collapse of the healthcare infrastructure in Gaza, APHA calls upon President Biden and Congress to urgently demand an immediate ceasefire and to call for de-escalation of the current conflict by securing the immediate release of hostages and those detained, the restoration of water, fuel, electricity and other basic services, and the passage of adequate humanitarian aid to the Gaza Strip." Since November, of course, the problem has continued and escalated. Um in the local world, world here, uh we have uh been involved in uh some of the other cities, as uh Jess mentioned. At the College Park hearing, one of the speakers said that the federal government has failed us, the state government has failed us, the county government has failed us, so we are approaching our city to hear us. I thought that was on point and it's why I hope Mount Rainier will also take action like this. Every little bit is a way to support our residents who have family and friends in Gaza and my friends in medicine. It is also important to combat the idea, and I think this is very important for all of us, that any criticism of Israel is anti-Semitic. In Montgomery County and Anarundel County, public school teachers and faculty at Montgomery College, Community College have been disciplined or silenced for any support for Gaza and Palestine. We must push back to provide space for everyone to have a voice. We cannot continue to see people unable to speak, afraid to talk and discuss these issues in a way that might someday lead to a positive resolution of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um I'm sorry, because I have to backtrack on the comments to get to like everybody, okay? So I see, ooh, 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 let me see. Um Annie Green, thirty-three hundred um in Bunker Hills, speak now or during the item?
I'll speak during the item.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Uh Thomas Silverstein, um forty-one hundred block of twenty-eighth street, speak now or on the item?
I'll speak now. Um Thomas Thomas Silverstein live on the forty-one hundred block of twenty-eighth street. I'm also speaking in support of the ceasefire resolution. Um I won't belabor my comments. Um Linda and Jess have expressed things very well. Um but, you know, I'm also a Jewish person and the values that I was raised with, um you know, what we've seen happen since October seventh is anathema to those values and um you know, every day since I've, you know, asked myself, what can I do to help try to bring about peace in Gaza, in Palestine, and peace amongst all people who live in Israel and Palestine, Jewish, Muslim, Christian, secular. And one of the things I've been inspired by since October seventh is the degree to which members of this community of Mount Rainier have been at the forefront of advocating for peace and advocating for a ceasefire. Um and I would really love to see council stand with the members of this community who've been leaders in the fight for peace and to stand with people um of all faiths, of all ethnic backgrounds in Israel and Palestine who are trying to realize a better future and to realize peace and dignity and human rights for all. Um this is not a community um that, you know, just focuses on the sort of you know, narrow minutia of local government, as important as that is. And, you know, I think this council agenda is a great illustration of this. I applaud council uh for the reproductive rights proclamation. But that is, you know, an indication of the fact that this is a council that is willing to and has been willing to um opine and you know, assert the values of this community on a wide range of issues. And I think it would be appropriate for council to do so with respect to the need for a lasting ceasefire in Gaza as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Uh Julie, you, you wanna speak now? Julie Burnett for one hundred block of thirty-second street, speak now or during the comment period? I think it's a comment period, correct? Julie? I will say yes. Alright.
Uh yeah, during the comment period. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Julie. Uh I have uh Doug uh Helsford. I speak during public comment period, forty uh four thousand block of thirty-first street.
Yeah, I would like to speak now.
Go ahead. For sure.
Thank you. Um Doug Herzler, uh four thousand block of thirty-first street. Um proud Mount Rainier resident. Um I uh work for, for an international uh humanitarian uh emergency response and human rights, women's rights organization. Very appreciative uh personally and from the point of the view of the, you know, the sort of organization I work for your proclamation on reproductive rights. Um I would just like to say, in, in addition to the, to the many uh Mount Rainier neighbors who have spoken out uh for the ceasefire relu, resolution, I'd like to express appreciation for that. And also just say that that, you know, this matters deeply to, to all of us here. We're, we're a global community. Um my organization works in both Gaza and the West Bank on food security and uh women's rights, human rights issues, working to with Palestinians defend their land rights where they've been under attack for a long time and, and to increase their uh agricultural production. The uh, you know, this uh this uh, the attacks on, on Gaza since uh since October seven, of course, have been devastating. Um I have, I'm uh, I have Palestinian colleagues who lost two family members during the bombing of uh Palestinian colleague who lives here who lost two family members in the bombing of the civilian housing in Gaza. And um my Jewish colleagues here who work for our organization have taken the lead in speaking out for this ceasefire. And I'm just glad to be able to uh ask you today to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have Sophie Burnett who lives in thirty-second street, I imagine forty-one hundred block. Uh Sophie, the mic is yours.
Hi, um yeah, I'm a long-time uh Mount Rainier resident and I'm speaking for the uh in favor of And I'm speaking for the, in favor of the ceasefire resolution. Because the last many months, we have seen untold destruction launched at a civilian population by Israel. And no one has made any real moves to like try and stop them. We're trying, you know, our very best here. And the most that we can do is ask our city council and our mayor to join our voices and call for a ceasefire to end the killings and the bombing and the mass starvation implemented on a civilian population. And we also want to call for an end to Israel's occupation of Palestine. Because just a ceasefire doesn't solve the issue. It just puts it off. So we need to also call for an end to the occupation. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you so much, Sophie. I have Mad, oh, Mad, I am so sorry if I'm gonna butcher your last name. Shell Sinker, forty-two hundred block of Twenty Ninth Street. Go ahead, Mad, you want to speak now or on the item?
Now, please, thank you. Yeah, you know, I too am a Jewish Mount Rainier resident. And, you know, I'm, I think ideologically aligned with most of this community on the vast majority of issues. And this one, you know, it occurs to me that we've had quite a few people comment and there has not been one mention of the twelve-hundred-plus Israelis, the children, the innocent civilians who were raped, murdered, mutilated, killed, tortured out of nowhere by hordes of terrorists from Hamas on October seventh, including members of my own family. And there has not been one mention of that in this entire conversation. And not one mention of the hostages being held in tunnels, tunnels where, you know, Hamas terrorists are using their own civilian population as human shields. Not one mention of the fact that there were babies still being held hostage in Gaza. Not one mention of the fact that, you know, the, there have been numerous ceasefire offers on the part of the Israelis. There is a ceasefire offer on the table right now that Hamas has turned down. And so it's just perplexing to me that, you know, all of that gets ignored. And, you know, I'm, I'm someone who, I've marched for black lives. I protested the Muslim ban. I've worked in security issues my entire career. And I just, I have to say, just the past eight or so months, the betrayal I have felt from communities that I have spent my life supporting, the absolute silence I have felt as antisemitism in this country has skyrocketed. A two-hundred-and-eleven percent increase in Maryland in the year twenty-twenty-three, year over year. It's just, it's, it's flabbergasting. And, you know, I think everybody wants there to be peace. But when you have a terrorist organization that uses its own civilians as human shields, who says repeatedly and explicitly that they're gonna do what they did on October seventh again and again and again, what is the alternative? And, you know, I hear things like genocide. And what's happening to the civilian population in Gaza is a tragedy. But just because something is tragic, war is tragic. And just because it is a war and it's tragic, doesn't make it a genocide, you know, words have meaning. And, you know, genocide is the physical destruction of an entire group of people that has been targeted on the basis of their identity. That is not Israel's objective. Their objective is to eliminate Hamas, an actual genocidal group whose goal is to wipe Israel off the map from the river to the sea and the Jewish people. And it's just, it's shocking to me that Jews seem to be the one persecuted group that nobody seems to care about. And for such a progressive community, it's very hurtful. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. And I'm just, you know, I moved here because I felt it was a progressive place that accepted everybody. And I feel very disappointed, so thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. We're gonna move on to Marty Mellett and Judy. Wash Mellett, you like to speak now or you want to wait for the item? And I also have Brian on deck as well after Marty. Marty and Judy, are you guys there or you guys want me to just read the comment? The comment said, thanks Mayor, this is Marty Mellett and Julie Wash Mellett, four thousand block of Thirty Hundred Street. You're not very much in support of ceasefire resolution encouraged is approval. Okay, alright, thank you both. And I have Brian Giggs here as well. Go ahead, Brian. Brian, if you're speaking, you are muted right now.
Is that me?
That is you, Brian.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes, I am speaking in support of the ceasefire resolution. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my phone. As, as we all know, over the last seven months, the United States and Israel has engaged in a brutal genocide against the Palestinian people. While I appreciate the views of some who say Israel is justified in its attack, the news reports that I've read and seen since October seventh, the thirty-six thousand Palestinians dead and more than eighty thousand wounded, the fact that entire Palestinian families have been killed, sweeping away forever the cultural and genetic diversity that those martyrs represent, the fact that the healthcare system in Gaza has collapsed due to US-Israel bombing of hospitals, ambulances and unraveled facilities, selective targeting of doctors and nurses and aid workers, the round-the-clock bombing raids and missile strikes destroying entire towns, creating hellscapes of rubble and death. US-Israel bombing refugee shelters, the Palestinians forced to flee from their homes, from their sanctuaries, multiple times, their lives totally upended, facing death at every turn. The loss of loved ones and family members, entire towns laid to waste, the staggering loss of what they've had to endure. The words and actions of Israeli officials themselves, who seem free to use terms such as human animals in reference to Palestinians and holding real estate sales of recently cleared areas. For all these reasons and more, it is clearly a genocide. The United States government spends three-point-eight billion dollars every year to give to Israel. Clearly, this is mostly for death machinery. That money could be used here at home. It could be used to feed the hungry, and there are hungry people right here in Mount Rainier. It could be used to support the schools by hiring a teacher or perhaps providing school supplies. It could be used to level one playing field or another in our deeply unequal and divided nation. So for these reasons, I recommend that you pass the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
You're muted, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Jared, is there any, Jared with a D, is there any comments on Facebook? Okay, so anybody that wanted to speak in public comments spoke. We're gonna move on to the next item of the agenda. And if you didn't speak in the public comment portion, you are gonna be allowed to speak on the line item number seven. Because I think that's where most of the people that paused, so they're gonna come back and speak. We'll go ahead and have a chance to say something, alright? And thank you for all the speakers that spoke tonight so far. Alright, so I'm closing public comments at this point and we're moving on to all businesses. We have the appointment of Mr. John Dimon to the Arts Commission. We're in council appointment, Mr. Dimon, to the Arts Commission. Luke, I'm gonna pass this on to you. I do see the Chair of the Arts Commission here, Tori, as well. So Luke, you have something, something to add?
Yeah, I do, and my light just went off in my room, so I'm sorry if you can't see me that well.
You can see me.
Okay, great. But yeah, I do want to just let John say a few things, but I do want to recognize Tori. And she's done a great job at recruiting for the Arts Commission and getting folks on. I'm really excited to see what the Arts Commission is gonna be able to do over the next year. Like I said earlier, there are meetings coming up. And just, just really appreciate anyone stepping up to any city committee. And appreciate John, you stepping up here today. I'll turn it over to you, John, to just say a few words maybe about your interest in the Arts Commission. And then we can, we can go for a vote.
John, the mic is here if you want to say anything? Like, what didn't you see about the Arts Commission or anything you want to say?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm very excited for this opportunity. I, my background is sort of all over the place in the arts. Mainly, I have an MFA in photography. And I manage the non-credit arts program at Montgomery College. And it's wonderful to do that. And like I get to provide arts opportunities to everybody. We have, you know, like retired brain surgeons and truck drivers taking classes together. But it's all Montgomery County. And they always assume that everybody lives there and is supporting their own community. And I always feel like, you know, I'm like, I should be giving back to my community too. So when this opportunity came up, I was excited. I was like, yeah, I can take what I've learned at Montgomery College and at the Corcoran before that and as a practicing artist and apply it to giving things to my community. And this is, I mean, this is the sort of thing that I've dreamed about since college, where like my senior year, I went to Saint Mary's in Southern Maryland. And my senior year, I was looking around at all of the people doing amazing art stuff and thinking, they're not gonna have access to these resources next year. And like, if they're not, you know, continuing with their education, that's a lost opportunity to give people the opportunity to see this stuff that these people are creating and for these creators to create. So being part of the process of making that happen is pretty much the thing that I want to do. I would much rather do that than make art myself and try to get people to look at it.
Perfect, hopefully both. Tori, you want to add?
When my kids get a little older.
Perfect. Tori, you want to add anything? I want to make sure I see the party of the chair of the committee.
I'm very happy to have all of these new members on board and I can't wait to bring some more public art to Mount Rainier. Thank you so much.
Perfect, and thank you, John. So council, I'm gonna move forward to ask for a motion on the floor so that we can move over to this appointment. I don't think nobody's fighting back against it, so can I have a motion on the floor to approve John Dimon to the Arts Commission?
So moved?
Seconded.
Is it probably move in second in discussion, abstention, adjention? So, John, welcome to the wonderful City of Mount Rainier Art Commission. Let's confer, okay? Alright, thank you, Tori, and thank you the whole entire Arts Commission team for the work that you guys do in making sure that art is at the center of Mount Rainier, okay? Alright, you're welcome to stay, but if not, goodnight as well, as I tell everybody, okay? But thank you guys so much, and Tori, please extend my thank you to the whole entire team for being as wonderful and we appreciate you guys very much. Alright, thank you, Luke, as well for leading this collective and creating it. Luke was actually the founder of the Art Commission for the record of Mount Rainier, who brought this to Maryland Council and made it happen after quite a few sessions, but we made it happen. Thank you, Luke. Alright, so second reading and adoption. This is a vote, okay? Of ordinance number oh-four dash twenty-two-four, amending the code of ordinance of the City of Mount Rainier, Chapter thirteen, traffic, to add section thirteen dash one-two-three-point-one stop sign monitoring system to implement the authorities of MD code and transfer article number twenty-one dash two-seven oh-seven in accordance with the provision thereof and to amend to add stop, oh, sorry, to amend section thirteen dash one-two-four failure to pay fine for red light camera or speed camera violation. So a stop sign monitoring system violation. Maryland Council will have a second reading and adoption of it. So we already went lengthy into reading. Basically, it will put us in line with state law. And we want to be proactive. Jared, I'm gonna give it to you because I know you love reading longer decisions. So get to just the key points on it, because we did have a whole read-through of it. What is it asking, what is it adding to the article? And what are we voting on tonight to add? Basically the same thing, okay? Go ahead, yours.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, folks can go back to last month's presentation if they want to take a look at. We did a slide, I did a slide, slide deck on the background for this. But again, basically, it is, stop signs are now permitted in Maryland only in Prince George's County within a school, sorry, stop sign monitoring systems within a school zone. This, this ordinance would amend our code to permit the use of stop sign monitor systems is now allowed by state law. It would not implement it. That would come in a separate process. Under state law, those, any, anything that, any new stop sign monitoring systems must be authorized by the governing body of a local jurisdiction after reasonable notice in a public hearing. Locations must be approved by county council. What we are simply doing is amending our code to allow this new flexibility under the state law that was passed, passed in legislature, signed by Governor Moore, to give communities like ours that have incredible amount of pass-through traffic and traffic safety issues, especially as folks know in town with folks running stop signs, to, to give us that additional tool. So this code does, again, this does a couple of things. It would amend, yeah, amend our code to permit stop sign cameras based on a school zone. And the entire city can, is, because of the location of our schools, basically falls under that potential, potential activity. So again, this would simply amend our code, Chapter thirteen, to allow the, the implementation of stop sign monitoring systems and the associated fines. And under state law, those are like, like the speed, like speed cameras capped at forty dollars, so. Yeah, so Linda, do you want me to cover anything else?
So go to the, where further out, like all the way to the bottom?
Yep.
And I think you were very good at talking about the process, which basically this is authorized that we could do it, but it's a whole long process after this. This just says it's allowed for us to do it within our own code, alright?
And state law did put, you know, did put a certain, when the legislature passed this, they, you know, obviously wanted to give us flexibility, give communities flexibility, wanted to put some guidelines and bounds on it too. So this, this ordinance, which, you know, is a little lengthy because it incorporates all the rails and bounds that the state legislature put in when giving communities like ours this flexibility.
Okay, alright, council, do you guys have any questions? Are you ready to like move the motion to vote? I see one hand, what's the rest of you guys? Well, go ahead, Danielle, and then I'll call everybody else.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My question is just a clarification. Thank you for changing the, under G about the fines to our maximum amount allowed by law. It says by state law, whichever is greater. Are we able to supersede state law with our fines or not? So that's just a misprint? Okay, then I need clarification because it says, or the maximum amount permitted by state law, whichever is greater.
You want me to answer, Jared, or you want to take this one?
I, I can take that, yeah. So we just, the, the limit is set for traffic violations like speeding or red light cameras, which we don't have any, or speed cameras or stop some monitor systems is capped actually in, at the state level, in state law. So we just simply put that in there, Danielle, because if at some point the state adjusts the potential allowance to be higher, then then we don't have to go back and amend the code cuz uh basically the so many things the state hardcodes, and then when it changes, then we have to go back and like bits and pieces, bits and pieces amend uh amend the code. But I mean, it candidly, the state legislature has set these fines relatively low uh and has really no interest in moving or increasing them. It's just to simply just decrease an administrative burden uh on us later.
Right. No, I understand that. My question was-
Wait, 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 wait. This is, remember, this is not a back and forward. Jared, is there anything else you need to add? Also, remember, this item was discussed in the last meeting, and it was sent to legal, and it was asked. So this is not the first time this item has been touched. So I'm gonna allow you to get one more clarification. I'm moving to somebody else, but it's not gonna become a back and forth to make sure you respect the rules of the quorum. Go ahead.
Right, no, I don't think my question was understood. I understand the maximum amount permitted by law cuz I even emailed with you about that to, to have to come back and forth um with changing amounts. My question is the statement whichever is greater in conjunction to or uh referring to state law. So if state law sets the maximum at like sixty, um, but our state, but we have it set at seventy, it says whichever is greater, can we supersede state law? That's my question.
No, you, you may not supersede. Yeah, so it says the maximum uh penalty should be forty. If this, so this is just saying if the state say adjusts it to fifty dollars, then, you know, the maximum fine would go up to fifty, um, which is whichever is greater, fifty or forty, right? Um, but we cannot, we cannot supersede state law. We do not have the ability to do that, Danielle.
So I'm gonna go ahead and read it again because um when you only read a part of it, it doesn't make sense. When you read the full thing, it, it makes more sense. Says section forty dollars or the maximum amount permitted by state law, whichever is greater. So it's based on what the state law, so if it's forty dollars, the state law requires, but if it comes forty-one dollars, uh, we could go up to that as well. That's all, that's what it is. It's like basically a legal term to say that we'll wait for state law to allow, and then the city could choose to like make it a forty-one if it's forty-one, keep it a forty if it chooses to. But it give us the, the bang one or what the state decides to do for us to like follow through with it or not. Okay, alright. So uh since I open it up, uh I need to see thumbs up if you have a question. Luke, uh Valerie, uh Jared, if you're good, thumbs up. If not, ask your question. We're good, Valerie, Jared, Luke, you have something? Okay, thank you guys so much. Can I have a motion on the floor?
So moved?
Seconded.
I will read the motion, guys. Uh, go up to the top. So can I have motion on the floor to duh 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 duh? Thank you, Meli. To amend the code ordinance of City of Mount Rainier, Chapter thirteen traffic to add session thirteen dash one two three point one stop sign monitoring system to implement the authority of MD code and a registration article dash twenty-one seven oh seven point two in accordance with the provision thereof and to amend section thirteen dash one two four failure to pay fine for red light camera, speed camera violation to add stop sign monitor system violation as currently presented to mayor and council. Is there, can we, can I second the motion?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion, objection, intentions, hearing none? Um, this item has been unanimously. The only reason why I'm being very specific because it is changing code, so that way um our team, how they call it, has direct and clear uh what is being added, and also because that coast, uh changes to code has also be submitted to municode. So that way, like, when they present the next package of things submitted, um, they know exactly what's remaining. So that's the next step. And in the meantime, um, I know Jared and I are working on what the next steps are when it comes to the county council to make sure we know what their process is to submit. And obviously, we did a vision zero study that will be a very heavily uh guide for where I will be requesting this um science because it was a study that, that did that for us. So we're definitely ahead of the game than um other people. Alright, moving on to the next item. Okay. So, sorry, new business. Um, sorry, guys, this little screen looks smaller and smaller by the second. Item number ten, first reading of resolution oh one dash twenty twenty-four, resolution affirming the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland's commitment to human rights and support for congressional and worldwide calls for immediate cease um fire in Gaza, release of hostages and condemning anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian and um Islamophobic um rhetoric and attacks. We have ten minutes, and Meli will let us know when we have next up. So, um, well, it's not done, it's a little long. So Luke, do you wanna do me the favor of reading it?
Um, so Mayor, um-
I need to abstain yourself. I'm so sorry, Luke.
No, that's okay. And just so residents understand, um, I know some of you are here, well, I've emailed with. Um, I'm a federal employee, and because of that, any proclamations or, or resolutions that um advocate for the executive branch of the government to do something, so asking for the president or the vice president to do something, I have to recuse myself. Um, it's a very fru-, it's one of the frustrating things about being a fed in this position. Um, uh, Selena knows well, especially during the immigration issues that happened in the prior uh administration. Um, but if anyone wants to reach out to me with questions on that, happy to, to engage. Um, but I do have to recuse myself from this, so I'm gonna go um off camera and mute, and I will wait until we get to the next agenda item.
Perfect. Thank you, Luke, for that. And this is um to echo Luke's, Luke's um statement. This is not something he's just doing for this resolution. This has been the standard for Luke for the last seven years that I know Luke. So I wanna make sure that is clear because um I don't want no confusion when it comes to um um the reason. He was very clear on why, so he needs to do it, and he's done it in the past in, in various items as well. Alright, so that leaves you, Jared, as all, I wanna say all this senior senior elected official um in the body. If you could please read it. And if you need like, um, if you need a break, let me know. I'll be able to step in and read it as well. Alright, go ahead.
Yeah, City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, Resolution one dash twenty twenty-four introduced by Mayor Selena Benitez, a relus- excuse me. Resolution affirming the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland's commitment to human rights and support for congressional world, worldwide calls for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, release of hostages and condemning anti-Semitic, anti-Palestinian and Islamophobic rhetoric and attacks. Whereas the City of Mount Rainier has committed and word indeed the idea and practice that all people are inherently of equal value and deserving the same rights. Whereas the City of Mount Rainier advocates for the safety, dignity, freedom and equality of all people, of all faiths and beliefs, races, ethnicities and nationalities. Where we as local leaders stand firmly against the recent rise of anti-Semitic, Islamophobic, racist, homophobic, anti- Palestinian, gender-based and xenophobic attacks across the nation, whereas uh since October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, over a thousand people in Israel and over thirty-five thousand Palestinians in Gaza have been killed in the past months over whom, of whom over thirteen thousand are Palestinian children, whereas the City of Mount Rainier recognizes that the current crisis takes place within a long history and affirms that for a long pathway to lasting peace and justice to be developed, the root cause of that crisis need to be addressed. And whereas Gaza is in a dire humanitarian crisis that worsens with every passing day with a severe lack of medical aid, food, clean water, shelter, and over two million Palestinians are facing displacement, homelessness, starvation, whereas the World Health Organization, the United Nations, Save the Children, excuse me, Human Rights Watch, USAID, International Rec- um Rescue Committee, His Holiness Pope Francis, more than hundred twenty countries and countless other organizations in Maryland and around the world have called for a permanent ceasefire to end the violence suffering in Gaza and to be in accordance with international humanitarian law. Doctors Without Borders has advocated for a total ceasefire and unconditional supply of humanitarian aid, including access to food, fuel and water. Survival of people in Gaza depends on this, and whereas dating back decades, the City of Mount Rainier has a history of adopting resolutions on diverse issues happening outside our city borders that impact our constituents here at home in numerous ways, including morally. And acknowledges we have the right and duty to speak on this matter, as well as the many other atrocities and emergencies around the world, and whereas um, the City of Mount Rainier is committed to ensuring that our neighbors of all backgrounds, including those from Arab, Jewish, Muslim and Palestinian background, affirmed of their worth. And whereas the United States holds immense diplomatic power and influence globally, including through, through the use of tax dollars, has the opportunity to save lives in Israel and Palestine, the region, and this moment we are advocating to our state and federal leaders to use their call, to call for peace. Now therefore be resolved, the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland joins other cities and towns in our state, county, across the nation, calling all electric uh our elected leaders to demand an immediate permanent ceasefire by all involved parties. Release of all hostages, the unrestricted and safeguarded entry of humanitarian assistance in Gaza, the restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies to Gaza, and calls for a resolution that protects the security of all innocent civilians. Be at resolve, further resolve that copy of the resolution be sent to municipal elected leaders in Prince George's County, the offices of County Executive Angela Lawson Brooks, County Council Chair Jolene Ivy, State Senator Malcolm Augustine, State Delegate Jolene Ivy, State Delegate Anne Healy, State Delegate Diana Fennell, Governor Marilyn Westmore, US Representative Glenn Ivey, US Senator Ben Cardin, US Senator Chris Manholland, US Vice Pr- sorry, US Vice President Kamala Harris, US President Joe Biden urging them to take immediate action, use their position to influence and advance.
Thank you so much, Sheriff. I know that was a, a long one. And I'm gonna open the floor to council. I know we have residents that wanted to speak in the silence, also gonna see the floor to them. But I think that two things need to be pointed out very clearly. This was not a request that was asked for us from outside the city. This request came through residents of the City of Mount Rainier. Why heavily, why heavily, I'm members of the Jewish community? So I wanna make sure that's pointed out because I'm here, misinformation about where this resolution came or the ask and anything else. Um, and to be clear, and I've stated this in emails back to some of the residents, I have signed in the past uh ceasefire letters on behalf of myself as mayor, not on behalf of the city, because I did want it to bring this item to our council. And I'm fully aware I could do it in a proclamation, but I think this is one of the ones that um I wanted to make sure we have a discussion. Uh, I do ask that all parties, please uh continue to be respectful like we were for public comment. We are hearing everybody else. I know some comments were made about the fact that um the deaths and murder of like um Israeli um residents on October second, seventh were not mentioned. And as you guys clearly see, the resolution does states that as well. And the other thing to point out very clearly, um, we make sure that um I know that there's been a lot of talk of things being anti-Semitic if we speak on human rights. And I think that this is not where we are with it. I think the resolution is straightforward. It calls out for the, the release of all hostages on both sides, and um that was important, but ceasefire. To put a point of information as well, uh President Biden has called um a couple of things as well. We include the release of um the hostages, uh humanitarian aid, among many things. And um so that conversations are happening. But the City of Mount Rainier, just like other cities um and counties around the nation and the world, have every right to stand and take a position on various items because this does affect residents that are part of our community and that are involved um in, in many levels and tiers. So I wanna make sure that is pointed out up in front, so that way um we could start the conversation in the same page. Alright, so I'm gonna go to um Valerie. Uh, Jared, I'm gonna give you a, a second to get some water cuz you did read the whole entire thing, and then we'll move on to the next council member, and then I'll, I'll head over to um to the members of the community as well. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, obviously, this is a challenging uh issue. Um, it's a very sad time for our country and for the world and for the city and our residents. Um, and so I thank you for um bringing this to uh us to discuss um as a community. I think there are a lot of uh varying points, and I think um, you know, as we continue to hear from residents about, you know, what actions and actions we should take or should not take on this. I think it's important that we're listening to everybody. So um with that, I'd like to hear from residents, and I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Danielle, Jared?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor, for uh bringing this forward. Um, a few people here in the city know that while I am Irish Catholic, um, one-third of my family are Jewish. My daddy, God rest his soul, married a Jewish woman when I was twelve years old. So I've been blessed to be raised by a multifaceted family. I was discouraged, not by anybody in this council or anybody in this city, but I was discouraged for other people to make my opinions known um about the bombings because I'm only a local politician and it might insinuate that I speak on behalf of the city or others on the council. So I kept my thoughts to myself between myself, my stepmother and Brian. In the beginning, my stepmother was very bitter about it, and she still is to a degree. She wants to see the end of Hamas as many others, both Jewish and non-Jewish do. And at first, she didn't care about the body count as long as hostages were returned. Over time, we both realized that the odds were getting slimmer and slimmer, that many, if any, of the hostages were still alive. And not necessarily by the hands of Hamas, but potentially because of the bombings intended to pressure Hamas to release them. After many discussions with my stepmother, I realized that it is possible to be both pro-Israel and pro-seasfire just as much it is possible to be both personally pro-life, yet politically pro-choice. It's like Schrodinger's cat. Both can be true at the same time. As for the resolution, I do have one request. Some might find it unnecessary, but as the stepdaughter of a Jewish woman, a sister of three Jewish siblings, nieces and to numerous, nieces to numerous aunts and uncles Jewish, a granddaughter to do, to, to Jewish grandparents and friends to four Jewish cousins. It would fa- I would fail if I did not make the request to add a section specifically condemning the actions of October seventh in Israel. I understand that there is a section that notes the deaths, but there is nothing in this resolution that outright condemns the actions that brought about this war to begin with. I would suggest adding a section that says something to the effect of whereas we as local leaders condemn the actions taken by Hamas against Israel on October seventh, twenty twenty-four that led to the deaths of roughly twelve hundred Israelis and the abduction of over two thou- two hundred and forty hostages, of which a hundred twenty still remain in captivity. With that section included, I am in favor of this resolution. And I'm willing to come back as many times as it takes over the summer recess, or whatever work needs to get done to get it passed and signed. Thank you.
Okay, Jared?
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate, um, appreciate the number of folks-
Can you give me one second?
Oh, sorry, do we have more?
We have run out of time. Can we go ahead and add ten minutes on the clock? Will you, uh, can you second the motion?
Seconded.
Thank you. Discussion, objection, extension, hearing none. There's ten more minutes on the clock. Thank you, Jared.
Uh, no, I appreciate the number of folks who've written us and the depth of feedback on this issue. Um, we've got a lot of feedback representing a number of different viewpoints and nuance between uh even those uh viewpoints as well. So I, I appreciate the volume of feedback and hope folks can continue to bring that and their involvement uh to additional issues in our, in our community, um, including ones more locally focused as well. Uh, and I appreciate and encourage folks to continue, you know, reaching out to their elected representatives uh that have a direct impact on this issue. Um, but as you know, someone whose mother fled a civil war in her youth and eventually made it to the US, I know the impacts that war can have on folks caught in between and the importance of um importance of peace. So um I, I know there are residents here to provide feedback. As Valerie mentioned, I do wanna hear, you know, and thank you, everyone, for the, taking the time out to uh come out tonight and speak.
Hey, thank you so much, Jared. Um, I would tell you why this is important to me. Um, Jared did mention that he had a family that flew um a civil war. I was actually born into a civil war. Ten years of my life were in a civil war. So I know firsthand what bombing and terrorizing and all of that looks like. I carry the scars of that psychological hurt with me, and so do many members of this community. And I know I'm not the only one. The Latino community is not the only one. I know API community, Black community, and so on, and so on, and so on. I've been through civil wars. It's something I don't wish, my worst enemy, a family that was held hostage. And so much more I can tell you about my experience that I choose not to because I think that I have every right to keep some things privately to myself, right? But I will say this to you guys, so unless people have lived through a civil war, you don't know how psychologically damaged um you have created for not just one generation, but for multiple generations. So to me, that's why it's important, you know, because at the end of the day, people spoke up on behalf of the Salvadorian war. So after the Vietnam War, quite a few of them people that advocated, here they're focusing on Salvador, and even there took twelve years for the war to, to end, okay? And it was a lot of work. A lot of people writing resolutions and where we're sitting today, a lot of people advocating, a lot of people calling our elected officials all, all various levels. A lot of people advocating, a lot of people calling on their elected officials all over various levels. So I wanna make sure that although some people think that municipal elected officials are the lowest level on it, we're the one where the boots hits the ground. So if enough of us speak together, you know, it does cause a wave up when it comes to our other elected officials. So in saying that, I very strongly feel that, you know, had other people not spoke in my position, right? I wouldn't be here. And a good amount of my population wouldn't be here because it was hundreds of thousands of people that died. And I will tell you, I'm not the only one. The city of Mount Rainier has also put resolutions in the past when it came to advocating for an end in the war in Iran. Um, I have talked to various like staff members, but also members of the community who have also been um lived through war um in danger. And they're here because others spoke up. And that's the reason why this resolution sold to those that feel. That the city council should not be speaking on this behalf, I will say to you, I'm very much proof. Uh, what happens when people speak up and this is the reason why I'm alive today. And this is the reason why many, many people that don't look like me are also alive today. So if anything, I will do, and I have done, as you guys know me, probably even longer than that, right? Is speak up on things that are related to human rights because I feel like if I was given a chance to live, it's my option. And very much my responsibility to speak up to save people's lives. The resolution talks not just about Palestinian life, it talks about Israelis' life. It also talks about like other people in the region who are also being affected by the war. Because this is not just killing like one group versus the other. It goes beyond that. We're very carefully to stay right where we need to be, to focus on the release, to focus on the humanitarian aid. To focus on making sure that like, you know, funding nothing goes through. And I'll tell you this. Some people have decided to say out that that is a prerogative. When COVID hit, if you guys remember correctly, for months, the World Central Kitchen was here helping us. Giving us food, making sure they took care of us, making sure they came to our aid when needed to be there, right? The bombing of the World Central Kitchen staff and murdering them was a law for more people to speak up. Because that hit home to those that took care of us when we needed them the most. Keep that in mind, we were the first city, we're a pilot city where the food came in Prince George's County. They have never done it within a county when it came to even close to COVID, right? But then they they heard our call and our need, and they were here to provide five hundred meals for more than three months. In order to make sure that our community survived while the people were trying to help us get more food. And this is the reason why so many of my Rainier residents were able to like live and be able to survive as well. In saying that, they are part of our family as well because they allow for us to be in the position that we are. And for us to be able to do as good as we did during the pandemic. And that's just a lot because we did lost a lot of lives, right? The on Sunday, when um Rafa was taking over and various more people um were killed, right? That also tells you that no refugee place anywhere is safe. So for those that feel like, you know, that at the end of the day, uh the means justify the end, I'll tell you, no, they don't. I have seen horrible things in my life as a child, and I'll tell you this, that kids in Palestine. Have also seen horrible things in their short life as well. And it's not where anybody should be. So to the to the various people that have various opinion, I hear you. But you also need to hear those that have gone through civil wars, that have survived to be on the other end. In order for them to tell you like clearly, it's not hypothetical for me, it's something that me and my family lived. Hostages, murders, kills, people being chopped into little pieces, like, you know, set industries to show an example, whether you're a student. Where you were like a, you know, union organizer, whether you were a resident, they even had an opinion. The city of Maroon is highly opinionated in many things, so I will tell you this. In our civil war, like just like many others, quite a few of us will be dead based on the fact that we have an opinion. And that's about it. But at the end of the day, we need to take a stand on voicing our concerns over human rights violations. Because that is important and at the end of the day, it is our tax dollars that could be building schools, providing food, fixing streets and paths. So the money is being said abroad instead of being taken care of. The issue is not money being said abroad to like feed people, take care of like, you know, medical aid and stuff like that. The issue is as being used to like cause harm somewhere else, the same way it was used in my country. You know, my home country, El Salvador, like it was in many other countries around the world. So it is our responsibility because we do pay taxes, right? To say, you know, where our tax dollars are supposed to be um utilized. So in saying that, I'm going to open it out to the community. And I appreciate how respectful everybody's been, although there's been differences of opinion, they appreciate all the. Several emails that we have received through the dates. I know that I have asked, because of open meaning law, we have like answered separately. Uh, we can answer as opposed because about especially if you, many of you guys have asked where we stand on it. But you guys have clearly know where I stand um and appreciate councils so um listening and um. Being supportive of this as well. So I'm gonna add another ten minutes on the clock. Can I get a motion to add ten more minutes so we could give time for speakers to speak?
I'll make a motion to add ten more minutes to the uh time.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Alright, so ten minutes have been added. Um, any discussion, abstention? No, here now, ten more minutes have been added. Alright, so I'm gonna go back to the top of the list. That said that would like to speak on that item and I believe if I'm not mistaken, the first one was uh. Juliana Barnett, forty-one hundred block of thirty-second Street. Uh, go ahead, uh Julie, the mic is yours.
Thank you. Uh, I really appreciate all the, um, you know, all all the in-depth discussion. In fact, it's this whole council meeting is a great example of the breadth of what the of what the city. Uh, takes on and looks at and and the and the care with which all these different questions. Are re- are regarded and and discussed. And so I, a lot of people have said and will continue to say many things about this resolution. Um, so I would like to say a little bit about the past here in Mount Rainier. I've lived here for twenty-six years. And have been involved with neighbors uh for for all of that time. And we had a group called Neighbors United for Justice and Peace. Uh, and uh were uh worked to stop the Iraq war and the you and. The city passed a strong resolution condemning the Iraq war and other uh resolutions have been. Taken by the city over the years for, as Selina has mentioned. And many different ways, um, both in the past and in present to show human rights. How how they are valued and valued for everybody. I mean, Selena talked about the food and we can talk about the rent control, the care that went into making sure that that residents. Have uh of the, you know, working class residents and immigrants uh have uh, you know, are protected. And uh and to see also to to hear those voices as well, which is really important. And I should also note that I am a Jew and I uh, and so I speak as a Jew. Who is very much in favor of the a cease, calling for a ceasefire. And of calling on the U.S. government to stop. Funding the uh the bombing and the destruction of Gaza. And I think that's an important uh piece to uh stress. Because we can call upon governments all over the world to do whatever, right? But but it's our own, our own governments that uh, our own, our own levels of government where we can really. Uh directly have an impact. And as was mentioned before, we have tried at various levels and continue to try. But we feel most connected to this local level that we we can talk directly and and have discussions. With uh with you all and we think that that is uh just, I mean, that is a real gift to be able to do that. Um, I'd like to know as somebody who who has done a lot of talking with people, that over eighty people have uh. Over eighty people have uh uh signed on in support of the of of. Mount Rainier's passing a ceasefire resolution. And and so and and it would have been more if we had had a chance to talk with more people. So that is really something to to note and that we um. Oh, also, another another point that's important is that the uh that people all over the. The um, the county, this county are, yes.
Is your time is up. Go ahead.
Yes, just I'll I'll finish the sentence that we are uh. Yes, I just wanted to notice, sorry that I'm getting some distractions. But yes, just for people who don't know. The cities of Brentwood, Colmar Manor, College Park, Chevrolet. Um, and I may be missing one, Riverdale Park is is discussing it. This, so this is very much a county-wide discussion that is going on that we are part of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Um, please make sure you guys keep it to three minutes. I will let you finish your sentence if need be, but. I appreciate if you guys keep it. Alright, so I'm gonna go back to the top of the list of people that if. If you were at the top of the deck, uh, let me know, okay? Okay, let me see. Annie, uh thirty-three in Bunker Hill, Annie Green, I believe you said I'll speak on the item, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Annie, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, so everybody said a lot of what I was gonna say. Um, but I logged in today in support of the Mount Rainier ceasefire resolution. Um, as our fellow municipalities, Chevrolet, College Park, Colmar Manor have already courageously done. Uh, I'm a registered nurse, a Mount Rainier Elementary School parent of a kindergartner. And a lifelong Prince Georgian. I worked in an acute care hospital during the worst of the COVID nineteen pandemic. But none of what I witnessed then could ever come anywhere close to the unimaginable psychic horrors unfolding in Palestine. On my phone all day, every day for the last eight months. I'm seeing endless firsthand images of kids my daughter's age being burnt to ashes, their missing limbs clinging to the bodies of their dead mothers. And then on, if that weren't enough, uh there's verified images and verified stories of aid workers being sniped, airstruck. While trying to rescue trapped people, um mass graves found full of people in scrubs. Doctors, nurses, handbound, some buried alive. And all of this unthinkable violence is being done in all of our means and with our tax dollars. And this is how we're being represented by some of our elected leaders. And this is apparently what we all voted for. Uh, so I think we have such little recourse for holding our representatives accountable. When they don't represent us with the bare minimum of basic moral principles. Um, in fact, our our own congressional representative uh responded to his constituents' concerns. About the Palestinian genocide with feigned ignorance, condescension, and literal talking points regurgitated from. None other than Jared Kushner, who you may know as Trump's son-in-law. Uh, just one week after photos of emaciated babies in Gaza started circulating in the news. Our congressman said to a group of his own Jewish and Arab constituents who were pleading with him. To stop supporting a foreign right-wing authoritarian ethno-nationalist regime. And he said, and I quote, Gaza isn't starving. Implying that all of the public health and humanitarian organizations that were actually on the ground and had just reported. The first official recognizable public health signs of forced starvation were lying. This unbearable lack of humanity claiming to represent our values cannot go unnoticed. And I know that my own city reps are better than this. I know from my experiences interacting with each and every one of you. That you're all good people and you're doing your best by the people of Mount Rainier, and I'm really grateful for that. So I'm asking you to pass this resolution as true representative at the heart of Mount Rainier. And we owe it to ourselves to make up for our shameful history as a town downtown and stand in solidarity for peace on the right side of history. Thank you for your time and free Palestine.
Thank you so much, Annie. Alright, let me see, I'm trying to scroll, if you were in the first row people that. Type the earlier and if I'm missing you, put your name on it and I'll call upon you, okay? So I'm trying to go through the chat to see if I didn't miss anybody. And that was asked to speak on the items and try to go in order. Alright. So what do I have? Um, let me see, okay. Alright, Sharnet, um, can you go ahead and put your name, block number and stuff like that? And you need to let me know whether you wish to speak or you need me to just read this. And I'm sorry, uh council, can I have ten more minutes on the clock? Sorry, Meli. Council, can I have a second for ten more minutes?
Second.
If you're probably moving second discussion, objection, ascension, hearing none, um, ten more minutes have been added to the clock. Alright, so Sharnet, do you wanna speak or the or or you need me to read this? If not, going to the next person. Valerie, same thing, do you need me to read this or are you gonna speak? Valerie, forty-one thousand block of thirty-first street.
Yeah, when it's my turn, I I wanna speak, but but I don't know what Sharnet wants to do. She was before me.
So Valerie, I conduct the meeting, so um, so in this case, I'm calling upon you and Sharnet wrote anyway, so go ahead.
Okay, um, my name's Valerie Solinsky. I'm in the forty-one hundred block of thirty-first street. Um, I have been living here for nineteen years and change. Um, this is all difficult. Um, I remember having conversations after October seventh where. With people who I thought would be, you know, in my community with who I thought would be um. Empathic and instead I was bombarded with all kinds of hatred and and everything from. Derogatory words and naming and shaming and and even threats. And, you know, I just, this is, this is an existential issue for me. Um, and and, you know, an awful lot of people are parroting what they are fed. They are fed various things and and Hamas has a fantastic propaganda machine. Um, we, just by saying that.
Valerie, you cut off. I think it's not just me, it's, am I correct?
Yeah, she muted mayor. She muted herself or something.
No, someone muted me.
Nobody touched, nobody touched the control, Valerie. You were speaking and and you uh.
I haven't touched anything. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think you just muted, nothing else, because nobody touched nothing. Go ahead.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't touch anything either. Anyway, um. So the thing is, I I'm not anti-Palestine. I've been in favor of a two-state solution for literally decades. I have, I have worked in the region in both Palestine and Israel. I have worked for for both. I've seen them work together. I know that I I've seen, I've seen towns where they live together. I know it can exist. I know it can happen. My problem isn't Palestine or Palestinians. My problem is Hamas. And Hamas will not stop. They have said they will not stop. They have dedicated themselves to actually. Bombing until Israel is literally wiped off the earth and until all Jews are eradicated from the earth. They will continue this over and over and they ally with others who have the same, the same idea. That's what, that's genocide. Genocide isn't, isn't war. And I I've I've, most of my family's gone because of a genocide. Um, you know, so so it's not evenly discussed. And and while I'm very open with being on be where I stand. Every time, every single time I ask someone, what what are you going to do when Hamas breaks that ceasefire? Because they did it October seventh, they continue to do it, they they have zero respect for it. And they've said that they will do it over and over. Where, what happens then? I cannot be in favor of a one-sided ceasefire that is going to result in the only homeland I have. The place I'm indigenous to and the only place that I can truly trust to take me should something else happen. Like what happened to my parents and grandparents. If if that, if that ceasefire means that that country, that place gets wiped off the earth. And so, you know, having an opinion in Israel doesn't equal death. And no matter what your opinion is, and a heck of a lot of people are on the side, you know, they don't like baby either. They don't like what he's doing. You know, he's lost his his country in that, in that respect. So in closing, I would just like to also remind people that Zionism is not Judaism. Jews are not Israelis. And people need to be very clear and understanding about their definitions. Thank you. And people need to be very clear and understanding about their definitions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, it's okay, so read a general comment, where are you at? Thank you for presenting this resolution, I would love to see a similar one for people of Haiti who have been starving and fighting for their lives daily. Okay, so Sharnet, it says, since you're not reading my comment, Sharnet, you didn't, you didn't type it when I asked you. So we have to go by order. Do you need to uh, do you need to add something else? And if you do, please make sure you put name, last name, block and street number. This is what I've been asking everybody else from the beginning to make sure we all are in the same page and I'm like fair across the border. Okay, alright, anything on Facebook? Jared with a D. Thank you so much. Alright, council, um, tu, 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 dum. You heard the various arguments and comments and everything else and plenty of us have gotten plenty of emails. So there's two things that's gonna happen on, Meli, when is the next work session meeting? Can you please let me know? Is it on the fourteen?
June eighteen.
Okay, so June eighteen, we have a work session. I am calling for a special meeting on June eighteen to vote on this resolution along with the minutes, it's only a two-item thing. We also have a hearing that same day to be able to address the resolution we just passed on traffic. And a work session that's gonna talk about the priorities of the city, it's gonna be three meetings stacked, basically one after the other one. It's gonna be a very um small meeting, so for the work session, this is like something dying urgent. We're just gonna be the priorities, so we could ask the staff to be able to uh lead. Bring only three, if you bring more than that, you are gonna be cut off at three. Alright, we all have a thousand priorities, only three and we'll match them up. We're gonna have a hearing on the resolution that we just read. Um, thank you, Jared, for like working really hard on on that one. But if um, you have to have a hearing after because it's like changing the mini code. And prior to that, we're gonna have a special meeting, okay? Just to vote on this resolution and to vote on the minutes that were submitted today and the minutes that were um I think submitted just today, right, Meli? Are those the ones that you want um, you're calling, you want, would like a vote?
The May twenty-first, that was in the package.
Thank you so much, Meli. Alright. So, Council, there's nothing else to add, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you to everybody that sent emails that was here tonight. Um, the various point, thank you for being respectful to each other. I will say that um, if somebody Luke, I want you off camera right now, for the record. Thank you. Um, if somebody feels at any point they have um they threaten for, they feel for their life for speaking up and stuff like that, please reach out to Mount Rainier Police Department. Because so far, when I have asked our chief, has any um, any of the X you can think of has been uh no reports submitted to police department when it comes to people fearing for their life for speaking or freedom of speech in the city of Mount Rainier, including after October seven. And we do take that very seriously, we could have difference of opinion. But nobody should fear for their ability to speak. So um, please make sure your report is something like that happened, I wanna make sure that comment doesn't goes unheard. Because that is definitely uh something that is very important and at the end of the day, we are neighbors, we are gonna have difference of opinions and that's fine. Right? But at the end of the day, I do ask for you guys to be respectful to one another, alright? Alright, Luke, you could come back up. You're free from your, from your box. They're going for the record, Luke did abstain himself completely out of the conversation. And he did not participate it for um work reasons, so I wanna make sure it's reflected on the record so that way um, he does not get in trouble for this. Alright, thank you, Luke, for reminding us and making sure that um, we follow through with it as well, okay? Because we would never like to put nobody's uh work in jeopardy neither, alright? Alright, moving on to the next item, I know, don't cry together, council. Discussion and vote on council recess for July and August twenty-twenty-four, the mayor and council vote on going into recess for July and August. That basically means we will not have a scheduled work session or legislative meeting. And um, we take two months and that allows the staff to go into vacation, get us ready for the next year. Get our legislative team ready and moving and everything that needs to do because um work doesn't start since September, a lot of work has to happen prior. And this is the reason why on the work session, we are gonna be bringing our three top priorities, match them so that way the staff has them um ideally some marching orders that we could agree on in order to make sure we work and at the same time uh that our legislative team has their marching orders so that way they could start working and that includes me, because I don't, you know, legislatively, I don't rest, I still working. Alright, and in doing that, uh, the council will continue doing what council does best, you know, go out there and be working as well, we just will not have a work session and a legislative session unless an emergency arises, so unless I um, we call for a meeting. But it's, it's been very rare that we have called for a meeting unless there's something that we need to address in short time. So in saying that, can I have a motion on the floor to um for mayor and council to go into recess for July and August twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
Is it probably moved, can I have a second?
Seconded.
It's probably moved in second discussion, objections, ascension, hearing none, this item has been passed. Alright, thank you guys so much. Now we have presentation of minutes, the city clerk has presented the minutes for May twenty-first, minutes to the mayor and council, this minutes will go up to vote on the special meeting that we will have on the eighteen. And that will put us uh basically down to the lot, all may minutes will be on and that way when we come back from recess we will have to just approve uh the June minutes, okay? So thank you, Melissa, for that, so it's in your package, any um feedback that you need. Uh, remember, it's a synopsis of the meeting, it is not uh history word by word of the meeting, that's why we have the recordings, okay? Alright, so thank you, Meli, for that. Now moving on to item number thirteen, vote and approval minutes, mayor and council will vote in approving the minutes for April sixteen, twenty-twenty-four, work session, April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, budget legislative meeting. May seven, twenty-twenty-four legislative meeting, can I have a motion on the floor to approve all three minutes as presented?
So moved.
Being properly moved and second discussion. Abstentions, objections, hearing none, uh, the minutes have been approved. Um, and like I mentioned, we just have on the twenty-first, so we would just have like the rose of minutes for today. And the meeting on the eighteen to approve when we come back, so we are basically technically, basically day by day already approving minutes, so that's been a big change of the past year, so we had a quite a few minutes to approve. So thank you, Meli, for making this happen, Meli is our clerk and she has been on top of making sure, Mr. Kamali as well with leadership. And making sure the minutes are turned around, you know, quickly submitted to um, to one of our meetings, an effort to review them and vote on the next one. So thank you all for for that. Alright, moving on to item number fourteen. Uh, German, can I have a motion in the floor to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Is it probably moving second, any discussion? Objection, ascension, hearing none. Um, this meeting comes to close of nine fourteen, we hope to see everybody at the pride parade on the fifteen. Thank you again to our PTO um, for putting my Rainier PTO, for putting a wonderful community carnival. It was like complete, um, everyone in the community was there, so thank you, community also for supporting and all the wonderful volunteers. Including our Mount Rainier Police Department explorers who came out in big numbers and also to the wonderful PTOs and I'll say to you guys that um looking forward uh when we meet again, the kids I believe are gonna be out of school already, so big thank you to all the teachers and administration for all of our schools. Who put out a lot of wonderful time and have been very supportive and we have a wonderful relationship. So staff, thank you for everything, council, thank you for everything and various community members for being here and um we'll continue the conversation, have a wonderful good night and thank you for joining us tonight, okay? Good night, everyone.
Thank you, staff. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, staff, I'll see you tomorrow. Okay, good night, bye.